Thank you. Now, City Manager Chad Oubel.
Mayor and Council, no comments tonight. Thank you.
Okay, there you go. I will now ask the City Clerk to take roll call. Members of the City Council who are either present in the chambers or participating by conference call, please indicate your name by stating here as the City Clerk calls your name.
Mayor Scott Sherman.
Here.
Steve Young.
Here.
Eileen Moller. Michelle Alexander.
Here.
Pam Idon. George Borzakowski.
Here.
Aaron Rapinski.
Here.
Tonight we'll have two public hearings. For each public hearing, staff will make... I'm sorry?
I believe Eileen is connecting.
Yes.
Eileen Moller is here.
Present, all right. Awesome. For each public hearing, staff will make a short presentation, then it will ask if anyone from the public wishes to speak to the matter. You must clearly state your name and address. You will be given up to three minutes to make your testimony. I will call three times for public comments. Once the hearing is closed, the public may not participate in any discussion by the council.
So, under the required public meetings, item 2.1 is the 2022 Proposed Property Tax Levy and Proposed Budget, and this is when we seek public input, but no action at this time.
Okay, do we have any staff that's going to present at all? Or no? No? Okay. I will now open the public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak to this matter? Again, I will ask if anyone from the public wishes to speak on this matter? And again, would anybody from the public wish to speak regarding the 2022 Proposed Property Tax Levy and Proposed Budget? Hearing no one, we'll close the public hearing.
And no action is required at this time. So, we will move on to item 2.2, the Visit Winona 2022 Proposed Budget, and Emily Karash, Lou Overhog, and Pat Mutter are here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Visit Winona Board President for the rest of the year, Emily Karash-Kasey. Lou Overhog behind me, and Ryan White are also board members here this evening. Just a couple things we want to draw your attention to in the summary that I know Pat sent over to you earlier, especially in the final page of the summary, which is a kind of overarching view of the whole year. Our goal in the past couple years has been to keep our reserves at 50% of our operating budget. The board made some incredibly difficult decisions in 2020, which actually left us in a pretty wonderful place for 2021. We were able to keep all of our staff. We did cut their hours in 2020, but we're back up to operating at normal speed in July. And unexpectedly, we saw a higher-than-normal return to travel this summer and this fall, with September and October being two of our best months that we've seen. A few other pieces we want to call your attention to. New this year, we've formed, in addition to our partnership and marketing committees, an advocacy task force to really look at issues like things like the second train, which Pat has been leading us diligently through for the past several years. Also this year, Pat and staff worked incredibly closely with the American Cruise Lines for 23 dockings with a lot more scheduled in the future. So, we know that's keeping them very, very busy. And we want to take this opportunity to thank city staff, especially the folks at Park and Rec who helped keep the visitor center operating so well, as well as all of the staff support that we receive here at the city, also to the Chamber of Commerce, especially Kay Matthews, who takes care of all of our bookkeeping for us, and also folks at Winona County and the History Center for both space and funds for partnerships for Southeast Minnesota. And if you have any questions, Pat is here and can answer those for you.
Any questions from council? Or comments? I would like to say that I am very familiar with the struggles that you've had in the past 19 months here, and I want to give you all a kudos, Pat, you, your staff, the board. There were some very hard decisions made in this past, during the pandemic. And I truly feel blessed to have as strong a team as we have in Visit Winona. I know other communities are struggling with their CVBs, and I really feel like we are coming out the back end of this in a positive light and a positive manner. So, thank you so much for all the work and all the difficult decisions that you had to make over the last year and a half. So, thank you.
Thank you to all of you, and we look forward to 35 cruises next year. So, come on down, and if you have the time and the ability to come help us out to greet the passengers, we would certainly love to see you.
And one thing of note is that doesn't necessarily add to their revenue, because they pull it from hotel tax. So, that's something that, again, kudos to your team for working to showcase our community without a direct economic impact to your organization. So, thank you. Pam, you had something?
Yes, I just wanted to personally thank your generosity in showing up for these events and for putting these events on. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve the attached resolution. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yep, that's okay.
I'll second.
We have to let the public talk about the wonderful Visit Winona.
Okay, thank you, Pat. I will now open the hearing to the public regarding the Visit Winona 2022 Proposed Budget. Does anybody from the public wish to speak? Again, does anybody from the public wish to speak regarding the Visit Winona 2022 Proposed Budget?
Can I speak?
You may.
Okay, yep. Is this on?
Just doesn't sound like it.
Get up tight there, like you're Aaron Rapinski.
How's this here? I just want to say, you know, thanks to Pat and her whole group there, and also that we do not forget our hotel people in town here. They make the large investments that help generate this revenue for the Visitors Bureau. So, just so we always acknowledge them and thank them for their efforts, and also, they are good taxpayers. So, thank you.
Good point. Thank you, George. Okay, I've given two notices. Does anybody from the public wish to speak regarding the Visit Winona 2022 Proposed Budget? Hearing none, we will now close the public hearing.
I reaffirm my motion from before.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Aaron. Any discussion among council? Hearing none? I forget what the...
Roll call vote.
Yeah, we'll go by a roll call vote.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idon.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Okay. Reminder that the public is not allowed to speak during these agenda items unless you have a request before the council, and I have given you permission to speak.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1 is the application for an on-sale and tax-ceding liquor license for Zaza's Pub and Pizzeria, and John Siniger, one of the owners, is here if you have questions.
I'd make a motion to approve that liquor license. I'd second that.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Pam because of the delay. Any discussion amongst council members, or any questions for John? Go ahead, Michelle.
I just want to say how lovely the building's looking, and I'm glad to see it opening back up and being available for that area again. I know a lot of people, some of our tents in particular, love to walk there to get their entertainment. So, I'm really pleased to see that you've been able to turn that building back into a beautiful end spot there.
Thank you.
Fires are never easy.
Thank you. We're getting there. Supply chain.
And supply costs, I get it.
Any other comments or discussion? I'd just like to thank you for putting in the effort over there. I know it's been a struggle for everybody involved in that specific building. So, thank you so much for reinvesting in a building within our community. That means a lot to us. So, thank you.
Thank you. I've had good help with these gentlemen behind me, so.
That's my neighbor. So is Mike. So, I got to watch out. But yeah, great job.
And a group effort.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mayor, may I say something?
Please, Eileen. Yes.
Just, I want to echo the comments as someone, I actually used to live above Zaza's when I was a college student, and so I'm very, very appreciative of how wonderful that building looks now, and I think it's a great benefit to the neighborhood.
Absolutely. Thank you, Eileen.
Thanks, again.
Okay. Motion from Michelle, second from Eileen. Pam, we had discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idon.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 3.2 is the massage therapy licenses.
Make a motion to approve those requests.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Steve. Any discussion? Go ahead, George.
By looking at all of these massage therapy licenses, I thought, or I think we're catching up with the bar owners.
Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we will now vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idon.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 3.3 is the license agreement for the Dreaming of Ice event on January 29th and 30th.
I'd make a motion to approve the license agreement and authorize the City Manager and Clerk to execute the agreement. Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Pam. Any discussion? We do have Kendra here. I'm sorry, I forgot your last name. Since you came down from the Twin Cities, would you like to tell us real quick about the event?
Sure. Yeah, just, it's actually nationally, there's never been a women's and underrepresented genders ice climbing festival anywhere. So, that's the event that we're hoping to host here at the wonderful ice park and, you know, bring a really fun event to town. And, yeah, this first-time event, and hopefully bring more ice fest every year, or a ice fest every year to the ice park, so.
Good, very good. Thank you. Pam?
I'd love to know what are some of the activities you have planned?
Yeah, well, we're definitely going to have some social hours and a presentation on Saturday night that will be open to the public and everything. So, more information will come out soon about what all that will be. And then, we're going to have the ice climbing clinics on Saturday and Sunday. So, everything from people that have never ice climbed before, they can try it out, to more advanced clinics for people. And then, also, the park will still be open to the public. So, some people who are experienced will just choose to come down and climb on their own and participate in evening events. So, that's the gist of it. It's pretty simple and just really bringing together the community to climb together, so.
And showcasing Winona.
Yeah.
Kendra, what's your last name again, just so I can have it for record?
Stritch, S.T.R.I.T.C.H.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we will vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idon. Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the 2022 Final Tax Levy and Budget, and there are two resolutions.
I will make a motion to adopt the resolution of the proposed tax levy and budget, or do you need them separately?
Second.
Separately?
No one?
Okay, together.
Together?
Together.
Right?
Better together.
Okay. Motion from Michelle, second from Steve. Any discussion? Please, Pam.
Yes, I was looking in the budget to find if we have budgeted for hiring a firm to help us find a new city manager, hire a new city manager. I could not find it. I talked to Chad today, and it seems that it's in the contingency fund. So, if in January, the council decides to go ahead and do a search for a city manager, formal search, the money is there. Is that true?
Mayor and council. If you would choose to do a search, and there would be a fee attached to that search, then the logical place would be to take that out of our contingency fund. It would require council action and a resolution, and in that resolution, you would need to find, you would need to indicate the funding source. And so, if we were asked tonight where that would come from, the answer would be the contingency fund, because we don't have that allocated as a specific line item.
Yes, I understand that the last time with the city went through this process, it was a $20,000 to $30,000 project. So, then, that is available, right?
Mayor and council. Pam, you are correct. The last time an external search was done, it was 2011, and at that time, the council allocated $40,000 in total. So, it was a combination of the search and any other additional costs in order to hire the new city manager. So, it was an up-to amount of $40,000.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussions? Steve?
If I could, it's the first budget I've been through, obviously being new to this group, but I appreciate the effort that was put in. It was not without some discussion and even some disagreement, but I think we came to a very good conclusion by especially not spending reserve dollars. I know I went round and round on that, but that was very important, I think, for the taxpayer, the transparency, that the taxpayer is truly able to see the spending, that we're not spending the savings account. And so, we can now put that behind us, and the spending that we're doing is truly reflective of the income that comes in. And so, I'm glad that we've set ourselves on a more sustainable and correct course. So, enough said. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments or discussion?
Mayor, may I speak?
Yes, go ahead, Eileen.
Um, I will be supporting this budget, even though I am disappointed that we had to eliminate positions, specifically the alternative response team. I think that's really vital to the health and safety of our community. I think it really needs to come back, and I hope that in the future, when there are some possible, you know, obviously we shouldn't be digging into our reserves, but I think that it would benefit the city as a whole in the future for us to be a little bit more creative about how we can make up some of those deficits and grow as a city, because we cannot cut our way to prosperity. It's just never going to happen. So, I supported the draft versions of this budget, so I will support this final version, but I think we can do a lot better in the future.
Very good. Thank you, Eileen. I also want to make sure that I reiterate, I've been receiving emails, I would assume other council members have as well, in regards to the removal of the ART out of the 2022 budget, and it is something that I really, really want to see back in the budget for next year. And I hope we make strides towards making it a reality for next year. So, any other comments or discussion? George?
But through this process, we were able to keep our two community outreach offices that are very, very out in the public, and the public gets to know those two people. So, we were able to keep that, so, which I was glad to see that, so.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, George. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we will vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idon.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 5.2 is the Resolution for Governmental Accounting Standards, and there are three resolutions.
I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution to commit specific revenue resources, to special revenue funds, to reserve or commit fund balance per attached Exhibit 2, and to assign the fund balance.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Steve.
Mayor and council, this item is our annual request related to the classification of fund balance for the financial reporting purposes.
Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, we will vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young. Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idon.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 5.3 is the Amendment to the Consultant Service Contract with Baker Tilly.
I'd make a motion, authorize the administration to execute the amendment to this contract and use the ARP funds.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Steve. Any comments or discussion? George?
Does Jessica just want to touch on this, what we're all doing here?
Yeah, so currently, there's no final ruling for the, from the U.S. Treasury on the acceptable use of the American Recovery Plan grant. So, there may be expenditures that we're uncertain would qualify for those funds. So, Baker Tilly would provide an opinion on the proposed expenditures, on whether or not it complies with the ARP guidance. There are also other ARP grants available through the state and federal government, and Baker Tilly would advise us if those proposed expenditures have other possible grant sources that could be used to shift the funding towards something else. So, our goal with this grant is to use it in the best interest of the community by exploring all of our options.
Thank you, Jessica. Steve, you have a question?
Thank you, Jessica, and I'm certainly in favor of this. We have to do this. Yet, I want to point out the absurdity that we have to spend $50,000 to determine what to interpret the insane rules of the federal government. What a sad commentary on our society. They had to spend $50,000 of this money that came in to some accounting, I mean, it's the, is it the Accountant's Recovery Program? Is that what it is? Being facetious, of course. Just needed to point that out. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. Any other comments or discussion? George?
I agree with Councilman Young, but if there's a bright side to this, that ARP funding will cover that, so.
You can spend it on that, but they can't tell you what else.
Right, yeah.
You can spend it on an accountant to tell you how to spend it. Thank you, federal government.
Any other comments, discussion, questions? Hearing none, we will vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idon.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 5.4 is the 2021 Sidewalk Replacement Project Certification of Completion and Final Estimate.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution. Second that.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Pam. Any discussion?
Just one question, maybe for Brian. I don't see Ryan here. When they do the finishing
of these sidewalks, is that done right by the contractor itself, or is that contracted out to finishing end of it?
Are you talking just smoothing it?
Yes, you know.
Yeah, the contractor that bid it.
They do all that. They don't subcontract that out.
Nope, it's all in one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idon.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 5.5 is the Designation of the Official Newspaper for 2022. The Winona Post bid 14 cents per line. The Daily News was 14.5.
I'd make a motion to adopt the following resolution, appointing Winona Post as the official newspaper for the city of Winona.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from George. Any discussion?
I have a question. How much does this amount to in a given year? So, we're paying for 14 cents a line. About how much is that? Or per?
So, Mayor and council, it all depends on the number of legal notices that we are publishing each year. In the last couple of years, it's averaged maybe $3,000 or $4,000 a year. So, that, and that was at the, like, four cents. So, that would...
Almost triple.
$12,000, $15,000 for the coming year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idon.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 5.6 is the Minnesota Oypiokeoid Settlement MOA.
I'd make a motion to participate in the settlement and adopt the attached resolution to approve the MOA and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
I'll take Eileen on this one, if that's okay. All right. Well, we have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion or questions?
Does the clerk just want to just touch on?
Touch on this?
Sure. So, this was a request from the Minnesota Attorney General's Office, and they worked with the League of Minnesota Cities to draft an agreement for all counties and cities in the state of Minnesota who wish to join in, to participate in the funding that will be coming from the national, there's two different settlements or two different companies, and this agreement will allocate money between the state, the counties, and the cities. A bulk of the money is coming to the cities and counties. And you may have noticed, there was a list of all the counties and some of the cities. That was generated before Winona had been signed up, but we are registered with the state. After the council adopts the resolution, the mayor has already received via the electronic document, the documents to sign. I will also send the resolution, and then, any other documents that they need signed will be sent to the mayor for signature. So, we will participate in this historic settlement. There are a lot of strings attached on how the money can be spent. I'm hopeful that we don't need to hire accountants, that it will be part of the agreement on, I would imagine that the city's share would be used for law enforcement and legal services. But again, that money probably is not likely to come, I would guess, 23, 2023.
I can say that both LMC, League of Minnesota Cities, and CGMC, Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, both have encouraged us as an entity to participate in this, because it does allocate more dollars towards the state that will eventually end up in the county and the municipalities. Go ahead, Pam.
This is really a sideline question, but does Winona have any treatment or prevention facilities available to people? Do we provide that service to people in Winona or Winona County?
It's my understanding there's no in-treat, in-house treatment of any kind in Winona, whether it's drug or mental health.
And I would assume some of this would fall on to public health services at the county as well, so.
And so, they would be receiving the funding as well?
Yeah. I think it goes, I think it goes federal, state, county, municipality, from my understanding.
Sounds needed. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call. Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Here, yes.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item five point seven is the Minnesota Department of Transportation Cooperative Construction Agreement for the Mankato Avenue Project.
I make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from George. Any discussion? Any questions for Brian?
Brian, I'll just touch on this a little bit here, just what we're all doing. We know what we're going to be doing, but.
Yeah, the schedule I at the end kind of summarizes the payments and the responsibilities. A lot of this was covered already when we went over the artistic aspects of it. So it details what we pay for sanitary sewers, water, stormwater portion, our portion of the road, and what's paid by state aid. So pretty much you guys all been involved in this. This is finalizes it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, George. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item five point eight is the Westlake Winona Stormwater Improvement Grant.
I'd make a motion to authorize staff to proceed with the grant application.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Steve. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I would like to hear more about this from our sustainability person.
Another grant.
Mayor and council, this grant application is actually a perfectly recycled application. So earlier earlier this year, I think in August, I put together a clean water fund application for very similar, basically this project. We did not get that grant, so this is an opportunity to pursue a planning, planning process to hopefully increase our chances of getting funds in the future and to better understand what having these infiltration basins will do for stormwater quality and potential some temporary storage.
Good.
Good. Too bad we didn't get the grant. I'm really disappointed.
Second time's the turn. Any other questions or comments, discussion? John, doing a great job. We really appreciate all the grants that are coming forth from your department, so keep it up. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item five point nine are the twenty twenty-two non-union wages.
I move to approve the non-union wages for twenty twenty-two.
Motion from George, a second from Steve. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And item five point ten is the Winona Marina lease extension.
I make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Steve.
I'd like to make a quick comment.
Please.
Mayor, because of my past, present, future dealings with Winona Marina or Dix, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Okay. Any other comments? Go ahead, Michelle.
I just want to thank staff for giving us all this detail, especially, I mean, I've been on council for a while, but when we get information that goes back to the year two thousand, we really appreciate that. It gives us some context, so thank you. I appreciate that very much.
I think it goes back to ninety-one.
Maybe. I'm just looking at the slip rates from two thousand, but yeah, I mean.
I appreciate seeing some typewriter.
I'm right. I mean, these are actually like standard.
Old school, big time, yeah.
Absolutely right.
Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Abstain.
Moving on to seven point one is council concerns.
I'll start with the council member Borzakowski.
Thank you. I only have one request for a Christmas gift, and that is that we rid our neighborhoods of the drug dealers. They don't bring no ho, ho, ho to the neighborhood. So that is a gift that I hope we can get along with my New Year's resolution. And also, all I simply need to say is Merry Christmas to everyone and have a prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, George. Council member Alexander.
I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna echo the drug dealing. I mean, I think, yes, that'd be great to have that gone. But I was just gonna say Merry Christmas, and can you believe we're heading into twenty twenty-two? I don't know where these last two years have went, but I'm looking forward to a brighter twenty twenty-two.
Absolutely. Thank you, Michelle. Council member item.
Yes, well, I too would like to wish everyone a happy and healthy Christmas holiday. And that year, that this means really taking care of your health and that of your families. The rate of COVID infections in Winona County continues to rise. And from December sixteenth to December nineteenth, seven hundred and thirty-five people have become ill. I'm sure they would rather not be ill. I want to remind everyone that we have free testing and free vaccines available. And please consider taking care of yourself in that way. On another note, I would like to know, where is that wonderful list of lighted houses?
I've seen it on Facebook multiple times, yeah.
Is that a city, is that a city function to put that out, right?
And council, you may want to call. You won't put Patrick on the spot.
Patrick, could you come up to the?
He may know.
Mayor and council, that list of lighted houses was actually compiled by staff member Ally Mayer. And Ally coordinates all the program activities at the East Recreation Center and the Aquatic Center. So this is something Ally and staff have put together. You can find the list on the City Winona Park Recs Facebook page. So City Winona Park Rec, you'll find the list right there.
Very good.
We had, we had a lot of fun with that last year.
Will you thank Ally for us?
Will do.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Anything else, Pam?
No.
Okay, very good. Council member Muller.
I'm just want to echo Pam's information that we have free testing and free vaccines. The COVID rates are rising again alarmingly. So please be conscientious as you are doing your holiday gatherings. I'm in a place right now where there's an eighty percent vaccination rate, so it's really nice. Highly recommend. And thank you for letting me join remotely. I hope everyone has a safe holiday season.
Absolutely. Thanks for being here, Eileen. We appreciate it. Council member Young.
I'm just hoping for a white Christmas so we can get fifty-five kids back skiing on snow.
Yep. Good point. I hope for that as well. Council member Rapinski.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to the street department for the wonderful job they did with all the snow removal and and everything they've been doing in the Winona community here. So kudos to those guys. Thank you very much. And I hope they have a good, good, wonderful year.
Absolutely. Thank you, Aaron.
Moving on to the consent agenda, there are three items. Approval of the minutes from December sixth, the final adoption of an ordinance to designate no parking loading zone on East Second Street, and a claim against the city by Nancy Tulu.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion from George, a second from Michelle. We will now vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
The time being seven twelve and there being no further business to come before this council this evening, I move we adjourn.
I second that.
We will vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young. Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Go Vikings.